Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order, March eleventh, two thousand and five. We'll call please.
Mayor Palmer.
Here.
Councillor Beechide.
Here.
Councillor Bergren.
Yeah.
Councillor Martin.
Yeah.
Councillor Fraser.
Here.
Councillor Stancliff.
Yeah.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag that I see states in America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lily, do we have any agenda adjustments?
Uh, not at this time, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that it is the amended version of the agenda that we had posted and out yesterday. E- emails, so things had got moved around from the original one that was sent last week.
Okay. And now announcements, awards, proclamation. Councillors. Okay. Public comments.
I know first up, uh. Oh, we got the list, but go ahead, Joel. Clark is first up on the list. You might need to pull that mic closer to you, Sir Good.
Thank you. Next.
Lee LaFarnie.
Also, all of this called me several weeks and they've been doing that over the state of that for about ten years. I wanted to speak really quickly about the business life we do. When I'm, I'm also always here for old men who have been on social media and wanting to come to my place for the last year. When I first heard about the business life to be enjoying yourself, my first initial reaction was thought as a vendor. Um, you know how my vendor piece of art and art and then I don't want to talk about most people think that I'm already telling you that that. Don't be like, are you definitely anyone, but there's definitely a finer end to what I'm saying. On what, but I'm very good with you. Um, in a sense, if not a fair name for self, it's huge community out there. You wouldn't want to give me this or we have to invite the lot to go to them. So I would recommend, um, when you're looking at our, and thankfully the business life is not getting impacted by that. Also, to make it a little easier, um, just not often to sell their products. And we want to thank you guys for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Shulgin.
So I, my hope is that. Um, for this year, I really think so. Want to be very hard to remind you that. That we said, I do kind of without comments, but I think that for both parties, I consider not to be.
That's all for public comment. Signed up.
Okay, and at this time, we have a presentation put on by the council consultant reports. Bev.
Men. Could you pause? It does not seem that microphone is working.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you might.
Okay.
I might have to start over just for the sake of TV land here.
Okay. Oh, my God, it's on TV. Um, I'm caught financial. The city's contracted auditors asked me to consult with the city of Gold Hill because their finances needed help. They hadn't had a couple of years of completed audits, which is mandatory. And I was informed that the funds did not balance for some unknown reason. And this should not be allowed in financial software, but I don't know why it happened. Also, there had been several office staff turnovers and the previous office staff were not able to ascertain why the funds were out of balance. Which I couldn't either, so that's okay. But they needed to create reports for the auditors to complete their task so that they could give their report to the Secretary of State. When I began consulting in March of twenty twenty four, I had to create the bil- beginning balances from the last completed audit, which was in fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. I I consulted with the city's auditors and because I didn't want to do anything out of line and we decided that we would create the beginning balances from what the last completed audit was. And I'm sure you're wondering why it's taken me now a year to get to this point. And there were several obstacles that were put up and that I had to overcome. The first being that I was reliant on Gold Hill's previous accounting staff to produce reports for me so that I could create the beginning balances. Well, I asked for them and then I would wait a few days and then I'd ask for them again. And I really rarely received any of the reports in a timely manner. That was solved by attending an in-house training by Vision Software here in Gold City, Gold Hill, sorry. And, um, then I could remotely access it from my home and I got all the reports I needed and things started to go faster. I was also given incorrect information by the previous accounting staff in September of twenty twenty four when they told me that all the accounting was done for the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. However, when I went to finish up bank reconciliations, all the accounting was not done. So then I had to go back and resubmit to the auditors and it put a hold on the audit for that year. Same information, misinformation was given to me for the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. But I had not submitted that year yet, so there wasn't much of a delay. Um. Luckily, when Lily and I, city manager and I repaired, um, fiscal financial reporting for the USDA so that RVSS could take over that loan. Luckily, none of those accounts were affected, so we were good on that. Um, it's just seemed like I'd find one problem, solve it, and another one would show up. Um, I found revenue and expenses that were posted to the incorrect accounts as well as the incorrect funds. And the credit card statements were posted to miscellaneous expense, which is not an account in governmental accounting. Everything has a reason. Um, the latest problem was found in the payroll module and vision personnel worked with current staff and solved this problem. And it actually answered some of the questions that we had about payroll payables and receivables. And without getting into the weeds, um, previous staff recreated the payroll that was outsourced to iSource or iPay.
I solved.
I solved. And, um, but they didn't recreate the payments that were made. So we had all these payroll payables. It's now correct. Payroll is again being done in-house. And, um, I told the auditors what had happened and it saved him some time going over because we didn't understand why there were payables. And by the way, I did reduce my fee for getting the bank statements reconciled and up to date and for doing an internal audit on the miscellaneous expense account. It went down significantly. And then when I was completing the bank reconciliations for the current fiscal year, I asked current staff on if they have their credit card statements and receipts. And they were nowhere to be found, so they had to request them. When I finally got those, um, there were several red flags that were brought to my attention, most of which current staff told me what they were and it was fine, but I'm suspicious. Um, I have a listing here of the ones that we cannot solve. And I'll give that to council to look at and it will be on. I don't know what you do in the minutes, I guess.
Yeah, I can provide it to.
Okay. Um. I've also created a new chart of accounts because the numbering on the chart of accounts is not anything that any other city ever used. Um, it wasn't normal. And I'm also helping the city manager get budget information that is real numbers by using Excel worksheets that I had used in my previous job. And part of the pres- budget presentation this year will include that Excel sheet to show, for instance, in the professional services, that will include the city attorney, city planner, city engineer, me, uh, city auditor, and any other contracted services provided. There's no reason to have a line item for each one of those when it's all, uh, professional services. So I am here this week to make sure that all of this is understood by staff. Some of it you have to show instead of just tell because pointing is easier than putting it into words. And to change the chart of accounts and anything else that comes up, I, we just got all the payroll tax deposits figured out and things happen every day that need answers. So if you have any questions, please ask and thank you for allowing me to help get the city finances back in order.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I might, if I can just add, so when I came in, I had told that we had had the audits done for the twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty two years, that we had corrected some stuff and they were on track. Uh, but what staff found back at that time is that pay, uh, previous staff to our previous staff had been withdrawing the taxes from payroll but not paying the vendors. So they were behind in paying IRS, Department of Revenue, a lot of bills. Matter of fact, I was told the power had been shut up, shut off in City Hall. And Adam came in, was fixing a lot of that. And so what they did, instead of dealing with the current software vision and going in and seeing what was there, they contracted a third party and re-entered all of twenty twenty two's payroll and then paid the taxes off of that. Uh, and tw- so they made sure twenty two and then they continued into twenty three with that new payroll software and that, that third party is outstanding and paying the taxes as we go. Absolutely. Uh, they, they backed paid all the twenty two taxes and in twenty three, as they paid payroll, they would pay the both the IRS and Department of Revenue. But what changed when they went to that third-party vendor is all entry into our finance software stopped. So when I came in and we're getting ready for the budget and we're trying to look at everything, we learned that payroll had not been entered into the finance software for eighteen months. So then we had to figure out those numbers to put in there. I was told that our financial software was not equipped to run all the reports that we need. And we still think there are a couple they can do better, but for the most part, we have been able to find what we need out of the system. Uh, but previous staff did not take the training in the software to be able to run it. When new staff was hired, I wanted to make sure we were trained in the software. So we brought vision in and did an in-house training and Bev joined us. And we learned she can get remote access. So instead of having to depend on us, we've given her a secure login and ability to log in and get the reports that's been able to do it. Before we contracted with Bev at the request of our auditor, I actually reached out to two other accountants as well to see what help we could get for the city. So we did three different ones that we reached out to. And then we, uh, contracted with Bev. One of the other accountants offered to come in and help city staff and said, the most important thing that you do as a staff is get your monthly bank reconciliation done. And he mentioned that when he went to work for a city in Southern Oregon, it took him a little bit because they were really behind in their bank reconciliation. He offered to come in and volunteer and give us the time to train our staff in bank reconciliation. So I went to our previous staff and I said, we have an accountant, a finance director willing to come in and train us in bank reconciliation. They said, no, thanks. We don't need it. We got it. It wasn't until after the newest staffing changes where Bev got access to the reports in that same timeframe. So September, we did the training. October, staff went on admin leave and then resigned in November as we're getting access to that stuff, realizing that, um, there was more to the story essentially and, and stuff not going on. I will tell you that since I got here, I, when I first started with the city, I was making purchases with my own debit card and I turn in receipts to get reimbursed. They eventually got me a, a credit card that said my name was City of Gold Hill. And every time I use that for city purchases, I would turn in a receipt. And that was held into accounting, uh, but I never saw a credit card statement until the administrative leave time started and one came in the mail. And I was opening the mail and I said, I realize I'd never seen one of those. And it's at which point I contacted the company and said, how do we change who the authorized contact is? They mailed us a form, the mayor and I signed it, but we learned that the credit card had been issued using the credit of the employee and was not directly attached to the city because it was a rewards card. So while we were trying to get access to the accounts, we also, I went to look for other statements and we found we could find no statements for the last year and all the receipts that have been turned in are also missing. I requested statements and they wouldn't issue them to me because I wasn't the registry agent on the account. And what we learned is while on administrative leave, that employee closed the credit card account. And we lost access to that account. Our bank went through that company and requested copies of the statements be sent. But we have no receipts to correspond. I've gone through like, we've ordered these mic stands that you're using, these monitors you're using. Uh, I bought them on Amazon, so I was able to go back into, by the way, I'd created a city Amazon account. Uh, so we have a separate business account from personal account, but went back in and reprinted those ones, but and I can go into Costco. We have a City of Gold Hill Costco account. I can go in and get those receipts. Uh, but otherwise I have to go to each individual vendor and try to recreate the receipts. So we have purchases that we don't have corresponding receipts to anymore. And I, just today I was talking to the bank and I said, because of the financial policy of this organization that you guys work with, Elon, the city is now in a situation where we may not be able to pass audit requirements and we cannot comply with public records retention that this paperwork has to be compliant with because they've allowed an employee to be the sole person over that account versus it being the city. So we have been setting up to do it differently and to have a city account tied to the city's tax number, not an employee's tax number. But this isn't information that I had before. Those credit card payments were being paid electronically. They weren't being signed by the mayor. And I didn't see them. And you could ask, why didn't I see them sooner? I wasn't the one checking the mail. We have now put some other things in place that we have multiple staff looking at who checks the mailbox versus who opens the mailbox. Payments are received. One of them opens, somebody else posts, somebody else does the deposit, somebody, you know, we're putting some checks and balances in place.
Internal controls.
Internal controls is the right term. Yeah. So Bev has been advising us through a lot of this, but what we found is the information was being withheld. And we didn't have the access to do it and we now are doing that. So we believe we now have the financial statements, the beginning and ending balances, and they have been submitted to the auditor. We believe we now have the financial statements, the beginning and ending balances, and they have been submitted to the auditor. Now we're at the point of waiting for the auditor. We got put to the end of the queue to get our audits done. And so now we're waiting to get those done.
Should be one more month, I'm hoping.
So chart of accounts are the individual line items in the finance software. So when we went through budget session, we had different funds that had a main budget number. Our general fund is Fund Ten. Public Safety was Fund Ten, Streets is twenty, sorry, uh, Streets is thirty. Uh, Stormwater's thirty-seven, I want to say part, uh, Water is forty. And, and so there's different funds. Our, our grant from Senate Bill, Senate Bill fifteen thirty got its own fund, it's Fund sixty-five. But within that fund, you'll have individual line items to document the revenues and the expenses. And there's some codes related to it. So the first number in the chart will be the fund number. Then they'll have one to say if it's a revenue or an expense. The department, then the revenue expense, and then just an individual coded line. What was happening before is as, as a payment or something would come in, they just create a new chart of account. Versus seeing where it goes into the budget. And so. What we have done is, so we have this massive chart of accounts. That doesn't necessarily correspond to the approved budget. And it's more numbers than we needed. It's not required to have all that many, instead of an individual line item for every single tax that we paid in payroll. That can all be payroll taxes or the ones that we have to report on. We could break them down to that. So. Uh, anyhow, this has been a project of what do we have? And so Bev has come up with a, a smaller abbreviated chart of accounts. And we have corresponded our current budget to that chart of accounts. So we're multiple things we would have had of individual chart of accounts, they've been consolidated into one. And we have our budget now to that. So we're, we're going to be able to see what is in our exact budget and as we're building in the next one, it's going to tie to the chart of accounts. The reason why this is important is because that's the key connection. To have our budget and those chart of accounts connected. So I could put in, okay, we've budgeted this chart of account number. A hundred thousand dollars. And as we go through the year and those expenses come out of that chart of account, we can see how close we are to meeting that goal. Or if we've over budgeted or under budgeted, if there's remaining balance or not. The money has been spent, well, some of the finance have gone in those chart of accounts, but the money in the bank was spent. Just to pay the bills. Without looking at what was budgeted. So that's the other piece that we're having to look at is the revenue came in for this item and it got charted here. Where was that spent? Where'd that money go? Versus did it get spent in that area or did it get spent on something else? One of those areas that I found was the state fire marshal grant that we received a check for a hundred forty thousand dollars. And it got put into a line item. But that money got put in our general checking account. And at some point, a few months ago, I came to you and we had sixty-nine thousand dollars in that checking account. Where's the hundred and forty thousand dollars when I've only spent? Thirty thousand for equipment last year on a chipper and this other stuff. So. Our gas tax, those monies, when we get them. We need to be putting them into our LGBI, LGIP account where it's interest earning and set aside and retained. Until the time that we need to spend those restricted funds for those specific projects, so it's being kept. Up till now, that had not been happening. So these are some of the things that we have had to find. And address, account for, and build the budget moving forward so that it's there.
And another thing on the chart of accounts, the same account number was used for the MCW Bank account and for the LGIP account. It was a nightmare to balance at the end of each fiscal year. So we're going to change that.
So they'll have their own accounting, so you can see how much is in each one and when the transfers go that they'll be getting kept set, separate. So. You know, this was supposed to be a quick process of, oh, we just have to get our. Balance stuff done and we'll get that audit done. And here we are a year later. Because the information that we were being presented is not what it was and we've had to go back and retract and do journal entries and get it corrected. I'll give you an example, the miscellaneous account that we found had so many entries in it, but under miscellaneous. Was payroll. But payroll was also sometimes attributed to the accounting firm. That's name is MCW Financial. Sometimes it was accounted to the credit card, which was MCW Elon, and sometimes it was accounted to our bank. MCW Bank. So because they all had the word MCW in them, sometimes things got put in. With technical errors, but instead of them going to payroll. Or the exact expenditures, they were put into miscellaneous as well.
I'm not reconciling those accounts. I mean, I've made that mistake myself. There are. You know, the fingers do weird things sometimes. But I've also taught current staff how to change those. Errors when they find them because they will by reconciling all those accounts.
So anyhow, it's important for you guys to get an update. Um, especially before we go into the budget season, as we're about to prepare the budget that we're going to come back and propose to the budget committee soon. Uh, this weekend, we're having a council retreat where we'll go over those goals. We'll talk about it a little bit tonight. Uh, but this financial accounting. Is everything. How do we know what we're doing if we can't account for the fin- finances that are there? How do we know what we can afford? If the finances aren't accurate. So all this has been about making sure that what's in the system is accurate. Uh, that. We'll go into this budget season with real numbers, not made up numbers. Not best guesses, uh, I guess would be the other thing. So. I don't know if there's any other questions, but it was important to make sure that we're adding that information and. It's, it was different than what we anticipated, but.
Definitely.
We've delved into it to make sure that we're doing it right.
Any other questions?
Again, thank you.
You're more than welcome. I've been in accounting my whole life and I'm old. So, you know, it's, it's important and especially when it's public funds.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can, can I leave?
Yes.
I don't do so well driving after dark anymore.
Oh, I don't blame you. Thank you, Bev. All right. So now we're going to go to, uh, section six, which is consent agendas, uh, approve on minutes on the previous meetings. February eleventh and February eighteenth. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Hold on, there's one more item there. It's also the next one is acknowledgement of minutes of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting. No, the consent agenda as a whole. Remember.
Okay.
Um, but this is the first time the council is seeing the parks minutes. So generally speaking, the advisory committees have their minutes and they'll adopt and approve their minutes. Uh, but it's important that we bring them back to the whole council so you can see the minutes in those committees. So we haven't done that and, and this isn't for you guys to approve them because the committee approved them based on what that happened. That's why this language says acknowledgement of. That you're just receiving them and you're acknowledging that you're receiving versus your council meetings are what are being approved in item A. But normally we just adopt the consent agenda as a whole.
Well, that was my point, Lily. Proving the minutes is fine, but then the acknowledgement of minutes, we've never done parts before, so I'm looking at.
It's still part of the consent agenda.
Okay, so the whole thing then, then why do you put them A and B?
So you can see what all is in the package.
So. The first part still stands. Second part is acknowledgement of the minutes of Parks and Rec's Advisory Committee. On January eighth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as, as presented.
Yeah, I have a motion.
A second.
Have a motion, second. Do I have any questions? We'll call at this time.
Counselor Beachide, yes. Counselor Bergman.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Fraser.
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item seven, council considerations. This is, um, item A. Is the vendor license fees for Gold Dust Days event, Lily. I'm going to turn that over to you.
Okay, just one second for me. Okay, so a couple of months ago, I was attending a meeting, a planning meeting for Gold Dust Day. And the question came up about vendor license fees and, and the statement was made, is there any other ones that, you know? Think that's everything, don't think there's anything else still out there. And I said. Well, there's the vendor license. Uh, and they're like, what is that? And, um, and so. In the course of the conversation, um. We in the city process business license according to our code. And in our code, there's three different types of licenses. There's an annual business license. There's a vendor license that's good for three months and there's a peddler license that's good for seven days. And the council, uh, adopts the. Payment of these, the, the cost of these, uh, via the, um. I believe it's through the resolution, but the actual business licenses themselves and the peddler license, the vendor license, the canvassers and the solicitors. Uh, all were adopted back in two thousand four. And so I, uh, mentioned it, but I wasn't aware that the city has not been. Necessarily collecting those for that event. Uh, what the code says for our, uh, business license and, uh, for those is that. Any, uh, business that is for profit would have to pay that. So a nonprofit would not have to. Uh, there'd be a question of whether or not, um. Somebody that's doing like crafts, if it's an actual business, is it for profit, is it for hobby, would fit into that realm. And consulting the attorney. She recommends against us waiving fees and not following the code. However, the council has the authority on a one-time basis to do that and. That would be my recommendation for this year for Gold Dust Day is to waive. The vendor or peddler license, whichever they would want to do this time. Uh, but giving notice that we need to follow our code and we'll be doing it moving in the for, it forward for other events. So, um. At this time, um. I mean, the, the code is under chapter five of our code. Um, and it says applicants for permit and license must file with the city recorder an application. Uh, and the place where the goods or property proposed to be sold. Um, the license has to be exhibited and it's actually a violation to not have it. Uh, which we've talked about via, we've updated that part of the code recently with updating the violations from being. Class violations to other stuff, but, um. There has been a precedence that the city has not been consistent in collecting. We do with businesses. Matter of fact, they go after businesses if they don't pay their annual license. Uh, but I cannot attest that we have been consistent about. Uh, vendor licenses, other than the only other example I have that we have done this with. Was with the fireworks stand and they have required them to get a license, uh, even though they're only there for a month. And so, um. Where we're at right now is can do requested that it be before the council to waive the vendor business license. Fees for the participants of Gold Dust Day. Uh, I do think this is something we should bring back to the council and kind of look at the whole proposal of it. Uh, as far as the types of licenses that are in there, if the council so wishes to update the code, it would take an ordinance to do so. And so we want to look at that and have the public hearings. Um, but my recommendation would be that the council. Uh, waive the fees for Gold Dust Day vendor fees this year. And we can make sure that everything's in place in time to get the notification for future events.
Okay, council. It's up to you. So I will.
It's like, we want to have a, um. A vote on this. On who wants to waive it. And, and then, uh. Are we gonna take a consideration? On a workshop?
I think because of the timeframe of where Gold Dust Day is less than three months away at this point and the timing.
Or next year.
Yeah, we can bring that back as far as we'll bring back some recommendations. And kind of some, a tiered approach and looking at that if that's what the council desires. For now, what's before you tonight is a request to waive the vendor license fees for Gold Dust Days for this year.
So I'll entertain a motion at this time. If you would like to waive. This until next.
I'd make a motion to waive the fees for the vendor fees for the Gold Dust Days in twenty twenty-five. A second.
I have a motion and a second.
Who did you acknowledge the second by? You had a couple.
Rick.
Okay.
He was first. All right, any other questions? We'll call.
Counselor Beachide abstaining. Counselor Bergman.
Yes.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Fraser.
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're looking at resolution twenty-five dash R dash eleven, facilities and premises agreements. Are we going to do a reading on that?
Oh. Uh. All right, so this is. Uh, just one second for me. Okay, so resolution twenty-five dash R dash eleven is the resolution that was before you. Yeah, I want to say at the February eighteenth meeting and we tabled it until we can hear back from insurance. Insurance and, uh, was going to get back to me with a tiered approach and so, but has not yet. Uh, matter of fact, the CIS insurance, um. The. Conference for CIS insurance was two weeks ago. And our insurance carrier was there with them, our local person. And, and so the recommendation of what I did with the language. Uh, if you can see before you, um. I have changed the information here to say limits up to three million dollars. And then what we can do is come back with. The actual tiered approach for the types of ev- events would require this type of coverage. And so this one's the generic as far as up to three million, but the insurance will give us the list of, okay, these type of vent. Events, you're going to want the three million. These types can go for this, this type can go for that, and then they'll give us a scale to go on. Based on that. So I brought this back before you with the up to three million so that it would not be, um. I mean, just so that there would be something before you because I said I'd bring it back here. If you want it to wait for the specific table to be added, we can do that. Um, however, this covers the up to and then that table would be able to cover the types involved.
Can I ask how, how difficult it is going to be to add those, that tiered system in there? Is it just simply cabinet? This resolution?
Uh, it, I don't have them yet. And so. What I would say is under section five, which I have in front of you right now on the screen. Further agreement details, further agreement details and forms shall be created and updated by the city manager as necessary to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions. Outlined in this resolution with state laws and insurance requirements. That authorizes me to add that table too, with this being the over encompassing policy that the council adopts.
So we're, it's, we're still going to table this.
No.
You know, you want to vote on.
It's up to the council if you want to vote on it or table it, but I believe it's enough to go forward.
You, you, okay, so your recommendation is that you have enough to go.
I, I believe the language of up to three million will meet the requirements of the insurance because they'll provide us a table of when. And that it also gives us the flexibility on circumstances to do less based on that table that the insurance is going to provide.
And, and that's why we tabled it in the first place.
Right.
Because we all of us couldn't agree, we were like, wait, we need a, a tiered approach. So I think she meets, she's met that.
And if we remember correctly, the insurance had recommended, we just say three million dollars.
Right.
And. I was trying to be kind and did less, but this allows us to have the tiered approach. Based on the type of event and the risk of the event that will. The whole point of this policy before you. Is we get assessed. Our risk based on our policies. And we're coming up for renewal and assessment. I'm trying to make sure we have some policies in place so that our insurance doesn't go up too much. So this is one of those things that you'll see several before you tonight. So this is one of those things that you'll see several before you tonight that are related to that assessment.
So we can adopt this resolution.
As is, is.
All right, so council, I will entertain a motion at this time to adopt resolution twenty-five dash R dash eleven.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five R dash eleven. I will second that.
Any other questions? All right, I have a motion in a second. We'll call.
Counselor Beechhead abstaining. Counselor Bergman.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Frazier.
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So now we're looking at uh resolution twenty-five dash R dash sixteen. Exciting resolution.
Well, this was an interesting one that came about with our parks advisory committee. We have been discussing the signage in our parks and we want to make sure that our signs in our parks are very clear so that if somebody's in violation of the rules, our law enforcement partners have a clear understanding of how they can enforce them. And what we realized is our parks hours are not clear. And as we were looking at amending our parks hours, I went to find the the rules and the code about parks hours and what I found is our code under section eight uh dot twenty-four dot zero two zero E says that, well, the exact language is that no one will loiter in or park in or something in the park from ten P M to five A M. So essentially, our park is closed from ten P M to five A M. But the city council uh in resolution twenty-one R thirteen opted to change the park hours and said they were trying to change the ordinance to change those park hours from dusk to dawn. We find that dusk to dawn is not very clear. What does that mean? Your definition might be different than your neighbor's definition, which might be different than it's not clear. Is it a half an hour before sunset or a half an hour after sunset? Is it before sunrise or after sunrise? So the recommendation of our parks committee was to have a set time. In going to our legal counsel, I said, if I'm reading this right, the council tried to change an ordinance in our code with a resolution. That's not allowable. She goes, that's correct. That resolution is null and void. You can't change the code with a resolution. You have to use the same mechanism that created the event to undo an event. So they would have had to have had an ordinance that has the first and second hearing before adoption to change the code. They didn't do that. They tried to do that with a resolution. So this is a resolution rescinding the incorrect resolution and affirming the park hours that were already in the code. So we're not trying to change the code. We're just undoing the mistake that was done with the previous resolution and saying that's not valid. And based on the recommendation of the parks advisory committee, we're affirming the language that's in the municipal code that says no person shall park in a vehicle or loiter in public parks between the hours of ten and five, except during special occasions or events as may be authorized by order of the city council. People have asked, I want to walk on that trail really early in the morning before I go to work. Well, if you're walking on the trail, you're not loitering and you're not parked. So you technically can do that, but if you stop and you hang out between ten and five, you might be asked to move along. So the point of this resolution is to say that the resolution twenty-one R thirteen that attempted to modify the park hours but did it through the wrong means is rescinded. We're affirming the park hours that are currently in the municipal code and that the resolution would take effect immediately upon adoption. So we're not changing the park hours because you need an ordinance. We're just saying that other resolution was wrong and we're affirming what's in the code today.
Okay, councilors, resolution twenty-five dash R dash sixteen. I would entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
No, no, you just adopt the current resolution.
Yeah. By adopt.
Yes, I'll make a resolution, adopt the resolution twenty-five R dash sixteen.
Also.
Who was the second? Rick, okay. So I have any other questions? Yeah, I have a motion second. We'll call.
Counselor Beechhead, yes. Counselor Bergman.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Frazier.
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff, yes. Motion carries.
I do have a quick question for Lily. When was that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. So.
Our general uh format that we've been using for resolutions is the first numbers are the year and then R for resolution and then the number in the year. Um, there was one year that they did them opposite where they did the number of the resolution, then the R and the year last and it got really confusing.
Okay. All right, so now we're looking at D, resolution twenty-five dash R dash seventeen, appointing budget committee members.
And council, um, I have before you and I emailed you separately two of the applications. I will let you know that since then, we received a third application and a fourth person inquired about wanting to turn in an application for the budget committee. And I wanted to get council's direction because these were the first two applications. Uh, we can appoint these members uh that are listed in the resolution or we can wait and you can review all of them. Um, so where we're at is we have two current openings. And there's a third member that wasn't able to attend last year and failed to respond to any emails I sent this year and um, uh, my thought is that we need to declare that position also vacant and then can fill the third vacancy. But they weren't able to attend and they're not responding to anything, saying they wanted to continue. Now, we had two members, I sent an email to all the budget committee members and said, uh, we're coming at a budget season. Can you tell me when you were appointed, how long you've been serving? Do you want to continue to serve? You know, asking those questions. And two individuals said they no longer want to serve on the budget committee. So that gave us two vacancies. Uh, the third person hasn't responded to any communication and did not take part last year in any of the events either. Uh, so as far as I can tell, they haven't actually taken part in any of the budget stuff at any point. Um, so um we are completely able to go forward if you're happy with the applications that you receive with these two members. Uh, but realize that we have since received a third application, a fourth person is interested and we need to deal with that other position where the person is not responding and not didn't, hasn't taken part. And so essentially kind of vacated the seat, but hasn't vacated the seat.
I'm gonna put this on you, councilors, make a decision on that. What do you want to do?
If you want to waive and address them all at once, we can do that. Or if you want to piecemeal it and do it at a time, this was created before the other applications came in.
I think we should do now and then what comes along.
Okay.
Birds in hand and all that.
So right now, I will entertain a motion for resolution twenty-five dash R dash seventeen at this time.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five R dash seventeen as written. I second that.
Any other questions?
Mister Mayor, I ju- just to clarify, not as a question, but our uh per state law budget committee members serve for three years at a time. They can be subsequently appointed again. It's up to us to decide how many times you want some, you know, how many terms. And as far as I can tell, I can't find any documentation of our policy about it. Uh, so part of me asking everybody how long they've been serving is I wanted to kind of get us a clean slate and bring back a this is who we have and this is where they are in their cycles and and kind of just affirm what we have kind of thing. Uh, but this resolution today is simply appointing uh Bobby Palmeroy and Sidney Warwick to serve for three years. So their service will be concluded after the twenty twenty-seven budget season because their first year will be the twenty twenty-five budget season.
And we will have an equal number of elected, non-elected on the budget committee, right?
We still need to deal with the person who hasn't responded to anything who I can't reach.
Then there's a couple of other people that are continuing.
We have been affirmed by everybody else that they're willing to continue serving.
Like seven.
Well, yeah, so.
Non-elected.
We, you have to have as many community members as you have elected positions. And since our mayor is a part of the council per our charter, that would mean that we would have seven members of the community. Even though we have.
Six of us now, even though we have.
Even though there's only six, we have a vacancy. Who knows when you're gonna appoint that vacant seat? Um, I'm hoping we get a handful of qualified applicants who want to be on the city council. Wink wink. Um all these city residents in the room, just saying, we have an opening. It's very exciting to go over policy. And all of you that aren't city residents, I see you laughing.
Carol, did you raise your hand?
Joel, could you help her out there?
Indeed. So anyhow, I just wanted to make sure that before there's a resolution before you, that I'm giving you all the information. So you didn't say, oh, I wish I would have known that. Mister Mayor.
So that one that we have vacant, do we need to, are that vacant?
I think it'd be appropriate to. No, not for the, not for the budget committee. I had two resign, so that's straightforward with this two.
For council.
Done that for council.
Council's, council's done.
Yeah.
The budget committee is the one I'm trying to deal with.
Is there a question?
No, you're ready for a vote. You had a first and a second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Beechhead, yes. Counselor Bergman.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Frazier.
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, E, resolution twenty-five dash R dash eighteen, skate park rules, safety and maintenance.
Well, I mentioned earlier that it was suggested we have some policies in place. So then when our assessment for risk comes forward for a renewal of our insurance, we can have a better score. This is one of those resolutions, as is the one following this one. Uh, so it was recommended that, uh, and we actually have skate park rules already. But they're in the park and they're covered in graffiti and you can't read them.
Is that the only place they exist in the park?
It's the only place I know of. I don't know if the rules are in writing anywhere else. Yeah. So uh, I could not tell our insurance what our skate park rules were because I couldn't read the sign. And so it was, uh, what they did actually is went to CIS, our insurance, and they had a recommendate, a recommended policy. Now, I have to say, it's the first time I have seen rules that have some tongue-in-cheek quotes with them. And and it was kind of like, really? Um, but this is, this came from our insurance.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The only thing I changed was putting our logo on it versus the other one. And where it talked about the hospital, I put the name of the hospital versus uh oh, I don't, yeah, I I put Asante.
Wish you would have added dude in there somewhere.
Dude.
Everywhere.
Share a car. No, I'm just kidding.
I like that enough.
Enough said. So honestly, our parks, I I took both of these policies to the park meeting last month, mostly because uh I really want us to be intentional to be seeking um, the feedback of our, you know, citizen involvement committees. Um, and this one was hard because we're like, okay, we want to take out the tongue-in-cheek, but at the same time, we don't want to counter what the insurance gave us. So that was the day debate back and forth. And in the end, they said, just leave it. Um, we might be able to edit these down the road, so they're a little bit different. But this is literally how they came from the insurance, including, uh, so addendum A was the rules that they said, let's put them on a sign. Uh, and then B is uh kind of what we would be doing as inspections as staff. So having our staff do regular inspections. You know, one of the things that we really, um, I gotta say that we struggled with also is the use of a broom being provided to keep the the skate park clean. I did go and spend twenty dollars and got four brooms. And I'm gonna spray paint them and they're gonna be bright colored and I'll put them on something down there. And if somebody sees someone with a bright orange broom going down the road, you know, they stole it from the city park. Um.
Which is gonna happen.
At the same time, uh we at least will have provided them. Yep.
That's right.
And what I have seen from our skating community is they do actually want to take care of their park and they care. So why not have that available? Um, I don't know if I'm gonna stick a chain on it or something else and just have it attached in a few different places so they can reach so far and then they can't go anywhere. But I don't know, I I Costco right now has double brooms and they were ten ninety-nine for two. So I think that was worth the expense to buy two packs. And then that way I can at least say we did actually provide a broom. Uh, and I'm serious, I'm gonna spray paint it so it's bright colored and it's, you know. Um, anyhow, so right now the resolution before you is that it would adopt the rules as specified in addendum A and the safety maintenance standards for staff in addendum B. I have this clause in there for the city manager that I'm authorized to update the rules as specified in A and B as needed to ensure safety, accessibility and proper functioning of the facility. Uh, that way, if we get feedback from insurance, we can take out some of the tongue-in-cheek. We'll do that. I I want to be respectful. We have adults and kids alike. Um, and just because it's skating doesn't mean that we can't be respectful in that process. So I am presenting it to you as was presented to the parks committee as came from the insurance company with the minor tweaks of our logo and the hospital name change.
All right, count.
How's this gonna be displayed to the users of the park?
I'm gonna create a sign.
It's gonna be a sign.
Yeah. We're gonna put it up over by the skate park. Um, and we'll go from there.
The first one says skate at your own risk.
The reason is because they're not designed for bicycles, they're designed for skateboards and so you know, bicycle using those ramps is gonna have totally different dynamics than a skate, somebody on a skateboard. It's just safety standards would be different for a bicycle facility versus a skate facility. They what?
Go get it.
I see bikes down there, but they do design bikes for those skate parks. And I see a lot of people in their early twenties, they're trick riders. And they, yeah, and and they do tricks and they're pretty good.
So what I would say is, I think we can still move forward with rules. There's the clause in there that I can amend it.
Right.
Let me go back to the insurance and say what about bicycles and razors and scooters? Yeah.
Yeah.
So and then we can edit it before I make the sign.
So I I do know the concern of the bicycles because there's a lot more uh momentum paid by bicycle. So the the injury that can happen using a bicycle is is much more profound.
So.
And that's why we should be concerned about.
They shouldn't be using bicycles at the same time as skateboarders. And and yet they kind of police their own down there right now, but far, as far as it goes, you're right, there's more injury, there's different behavior there. And and I'm gonna go back to the first thing on it. Skate at your own risk.
Yes.
And and so, I mean, do we say skate or razor or whatever, you know, it's like u- use of this facility at your own risk. Use it at your own risk, you know, so we can probably edit that. So I'll run it by the insurance just to make sure that the the intent is there. But but really, it's the mixed mode that actually increases the chance of injury and that's why I think they say that. But you're right, you have the little scooters, some of them have bigger wheels than other wheels and stuff like that. Um, but you know, y- you see people taking turns. So sometimes you'll have someone on a board out there and then you'll see someone pause and then you'll see a bike go through and then you'll see a skateboard through. I, you know, I I want people safe, but we have a a facility that the community likes to use. And there's not a lot of things for people to do in the community. So I'd rather focus on the safety aspect of it versus the you can't aspect of it.
So would you like to have a motion on this a little or you want to table it and add?
I think that last line you just covered.
Okay. So, councilors, I will entertain a motion on uh resolution twenty-five dash R dash eighteen.
I make a motion to pass resolution number twenty-five dash R dash eighteen.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Counselor Beechide?
Yes.
Counselor Burgren?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Frazier?
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F. Resolution twenty-five dash R dash nineteen Public Playground Safety Handbook.
Now, council, since I emailed you this, I expect you have memorized the attached, just kidding. So there's a federal commission called the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. They developed uh, a playground safety handbook. It's a great resource for materials to use and inspections to use and measurements and all that other kinda stuff, so we didn't edit this one at all, it's as it came from the feds, and basically the resolution is that we adopt the handbook and that I, you know, I have to follow up with making sure we comply with the standards and guidelines. Um, and then we can make updates as, as necessary to reflect revisions on the handbook, so if they come out with a newer version, we can implement the newer version as that time and just keep current with it. And so that would be the intent of this, that we follow the National Consumer Product Safety Commission's guidelines for dealing with playground safety. And that moving in the future, if they adopt new regulations as a commission, which I don't know, commissions do what every ten years or so, or however often, that we can just put into play the new one when it passes as well. Don't ask that question. We haven't implemented these safety components yet, and we will be. But you know, it's, it's one of the things our Parks Committee has been looking at is playground equipment and our last master plan, when we got feedback from the public, you know, they did a listening session at Handby Middle School. I don't know if everybody realizes our Parks Master Plan has that, that was part of it, but in both the public feedback and the Handby one is that was a desire for more playgrounds and for more parking, and so it's kinda one of those things that I don't know, just the opportunity, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right.
Any other questions from the council? So I will entertain a motion on the Resolution twenty-five dash R dash nineteen to adopt this handbook, safety.
Make motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five from nineteen.
I'll second that.
Any other questions from councillors?
Roll call.
Counselor Beechide?
Yes.
Counselor Burgren?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Frazier?
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item G, Resolution twenty-five dash R dash twenty Four Way Community Foundation Grant Application.
This might sound familiar, council.
It does.
Remember we did this recently? But this is a different topic. Well, no, it's the same topic, it's a different project, and I debated bringing you one, rescinding the other, but I just figured it'd be just easier just to bring you this one. And this is the whole reason why our packet and agenda was amended to add this in. We heard back from the landscaper that's helping us with the park and the irrigation that it's not possible to get the bids and stuff in time to get the grant application in. And so I called, uh, one of the board members for Four Way Foundation and discussed our options as a city and wanting to qualify for this grant round, and the applications due April first. And, uh, kind of some of our options. So one of the other options we've been looking at is in partnership with the Little League, and I really want the Little League to make their own application because what we've wanted to do is put electric gates in at both of our entrances, the main park entrance and down by the parking lot. Uh, that would be on timers, so when the park hours are closed, the gates close. When they're open in the morning, they open. And, but they would have sensors on the inside, so if somebody was in there and the gate closed, they could still get out. And we know it's not gonna deter all the stuff that can happen in a park, but it can definitely cut down the amount of people that are going in the park at two AM, and we have them on camera doing brodies in the gravel park and doing all this other kinda stuff, so but there's an expense involved. Uh, Friday, I have, uh, a fence company coming out. And they're going to give us bids in four different areas of, that we're looking to do fencing, uh, for safety purposes. And so you'll see that this one is fencing gates and other means of controlling the parks because we're gonna try to see what the bids come back at, what kinda meets the thing, so we can get the most out of it, but our first priority is to see if we can do these electric gates. And, uh, I were, um, meeting with the Parks Board member Friday with the fence company as well to try to get that. They've tried on their own, we've had ghosting by one company, another who said they give bids, then they don't, others don't respond. Well, I called yet another company and they said, yeah, oh you know, oh yeah, that one out on two thirty-four, oh yeah, right next to that, I mean, they knew the area, and they said, can you do Friday at eleven? Why, yes, we can. And, uh, so it's kinda quick moving to bring it back, but changing tr- uh, goal of the grant application from the irrigation system, which we're still pursuing. But we're gonna have to do that in phases and different process and see some other funding to get the pump for the irrigation. But this would allow us to either focus on some fencing areas that we need to address either at City Park or at the sports park around the playground area. The goal is to put some fencing between where the playground area is and the walkway, so that kids don't disappear down the path or to the river. So we're gonna get those bids all back, and based on what it is, we're gonna try to do as much as we can. But if the gate itself is all that we can do, we're gonna try to focus on that. But this is if the council gives a blessing to go that direction, we have to pass a resolution for the grant application so that we can ask for that.
Any other questions from the council?
Alright, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution twenty-five dash R dash twenty.
I'll make a motion, um, to accept twenty, uh, resolution, to pass twenty resolution. Resolution number twenty-five R twenty.
I second that with our blessing.
Yeah, talk tonight.
Okay, any other questions? So I have a
a motion and I have a second, roll call.
Counselor Beechide?
Yes.
Counselor Burgren?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Frazier?
Yes.
Counselor Stancliff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And council, I just wanna acknowledge, that's twenty resolutions you've passed in two months. That's a lot of work.
It's a lot.
Uh, it's our third month, but yeah, I mean, it's
A lot of reading.
It is. I, I know I told you that we're getting a lot of work done, and it's all a heavy lift that you guys have been doing, so this is how we're trying to encourage recruitment is to keep adding to the work.
I'll tell you, the guy that recruited me said this was one day a month.
Honey, I was told the same thing.
It worked, did it?
It's all that matters.
Okay, so moving on, let's go to reports from councillors.
None.
None? Alright, then there's section. What was that, Joe?
I don't believe we had a planning commission meeting, did we?
Uh, we didn't last month, and it's looking negligible for this month. I will tell you that we're canceling Parks Meeting tomorrow. I'll send out an email with kind of a staffing update with some stuff, so you guys can get an update on but we'll meet in April. So and then last month, uh, we did do our Parks Meeting via Zoom. And it was open to the public, which made it interesting because maybe two weeks later, somebody went and opened that Zoom meeting, and I got a notification, so I gotta figure out how to close Zoom meetings outside of the Zoom meeting, but lessons learned, um, but it was, uh, neat to be able to get the participation of the Parks Committee. Our liaisons weren't able to join us that night. So I, not to give you a report, but you just voted on everything that we did that night, so all of these lovely policies, um, they gotta do that by, via Zoom, poor sta- or poor volunteers.
Do we need to have one this one, or? I know we need to keep that one going.
So we have a lot of stuff potentially on the periphery, but it's not quite there yet. And I think we're okay. I'll get back to you soon. But I think as it's looking right now, we're not gonna, I, I had my planning update today, they didn't have anything that would qualify to go there. And the initiation that the council did at the last minute for some code changes isn't ready to come to the planning commission yet, so we went over those updates. But they did divide and conquer, so we're gonna be bringing those back, so it's just, it's, it's like there's so many things kinda on the periphery, but not quite there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, reports from the manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna take these out of order, if that's okay. So I wanna thank you. I was able to take, um, some time off. I took a, a week of personal time, or a little over a week of personal time. And then I had to go straight to a conference, and I don't recommend that. But it, and it felt like I was gone forever, but I will tell you, uh, so this was the first time with our new charter in place that I named somebody in my place to be filling in as I was unavailable. But I need to remind the council, that means you contact them with questions, not say well, we'll wait or we'll just go without, Lily's on vacation, we don't need to check in. No, there was an interim city manager. And what I will tell you is she was in regular contact with me. W- we talked daily via text or message. And so if, if you feel it can't wait, there's an interim for a reason. And so use that interim. If they don't have the answer on the spot, they'll find out. And so I just wanna encourage that process, cuz yeah, it makes it interesting. But I did go to, I got a scholarship to attend the Oregon Govern- Government Finance Officers Association Conference. I felt very out of place being in a room of hundreds of accountants and finance directors and all the individual department heads, and there are some amazing things that cities are doing that have staff and money and things, but, um, it was good to talk to some vendors as well and see some opportunities. I'll give you an example, I brought up the issues with the credit cards earlier. Um, Umpqua Bank partners with Elon Financial, and they had done that rewards card with a previous employee. But they have a different one that's a community card, but I met with Umpqua Bank while I was there, and they said, oh, we have the commercial card. So they called me today to tell me the requirements, and it's a five million dollar annual budget with two hundred fifty thousand dollars spending on the card a year. We're not doing that. So I declined.
Wait a minute, what's the interest?
Well, my view on credit cards is you pay them off every month, so you don't have interest, but anyhow, to say the least, it was good conversation, but it was just curious. I will be recommending after our audit period this year that we go out to bid for a request for, uh, auditors. And we're, um, our auditor's gonna be retiring shortly. It's a good time to see if the city should get another auditor. The other thing is, is as far as I can tell of all the audit reports that I have found in the cupboards around here, they've all been this one auditor. And from time to time, switching it up is good. That first year with a new auditor is a lot of work. But then you get a fresh perspective, you see if anything's been missed, you make sure that things are done. So one of the things that out of that conference is I talked to a couple different auditors. And one has, uh, in particular was interested. But we'll see, we'll put it out for a proposal when the time comes to see about that process, so we can get it done. Let's get through this for current audit status first, but the neat thing that I saw, well, and, and it was the weirdest thing to be in that room with that many people, and I knew one person. It was unusual, cuz we've been at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and I might know a few people. And so to go to a conference where I knew one person there was very humbling.
Did you hug her?
I did not hug her. I did give her the raffle I won, so. Anyhow, so but it was good to get a perspective. Uh, one of the things they recommended that we do is part of our, our billing process, so is to add one more checks and balances in something called, uh, a positive pay report to the bank. So when we do our bill pay and we do our checks, then we send a report to our bank of here's the recipient, here's the amount, here's the check number. And if anybody tries to cash a check with anything different than what's on that report, they deny it. I contacted our bank while I was still at the conference to see if we can do that process, and they said, well, absolutely, but you're not paying for that service right now. Would you like our sales department to reach out to you to tell you how much you have to pay us, so we can do that process? So we're not signed up for it yet, but it was, it was good to kinda hear some best practices of some things. And I gotta tell you, it's a lot easier for bigger places to do some of those things. When you only have three of us in the office, it's a lot harder to say alright, who's doing what, and then if somebody's not there for the day now, who does, does what? And, uh, but we have implemented some things that are different than they have been in the past, and gaining the trust of our community with our finances is very important to me. And I know that it's taken decades of mistrust. And it's not gonna be one overnight. But, you know, one meeting at a time where I say I'm following the code, I'm gonna piss off this town, no, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. You hire, you hired me to do the right thing. I don't want us to overregulate, but I want us to be fair. I want us to follow the code, and there's places the code needs to be updated. And with our finances, it's other people's monies that we've been entrusted with. And so it's important that we're doing it right. Just the same with our utility billing. You may have heard complaints. So I wanna say it was either October's, the end of October going into November that we posted anybody that had not paid in over sixty days. And we had some shut offs. But mostly, we had people get on payment plans. And anybody who's come in who said, this is what I can do, we've worked with them. And they're like, I'm sorry, I can't do it by that day. Will you work with me? I've had other cities that say, I'm sorry, we don't give any grace. This is what it's due, you will be shut off, deal with it. Our goal has not been to be punitive, it's been to have accountability and to be a good steward. So we started those first couple months with non-payments in over sixty days. Then we switched this last month to balances over sixty days old. And we're gonna do that again this month. There was over a hundred notices that went out. And it ended up with fourteen shut offs. Thirteen came in and made payment plans, and what the notice said is you have a balance over sixty days. And please pay your past due balance or come in and make a payment plan, or you will be shut off on such and such a date. And that there, there were shut offs again, so but of the over a hundred, there were fourteen shut offs. And all came back in but one, and we believe that one we have to deal with, but we're also now gonna be going after all those accounts that were closed with account balances that have just been left in limbo. And the next phase will be for us to be sending those over to collections, and the collections agency can go after those closed past accounts. We have high water rates. We don't have a lot of people to pay them. And our needs in our water system, because of decades of neglect of our water system, mean that we have repairs that are emergency repairs more often than we should. Had we been doing this right in councils before, we're approving repairs and going down a path along the way that this isn't all catastrophic and everything we're dealing with right now, we wouldn't be paying as much, but do you realize we're paying between ten and fifteen thousand dollars a month to have our plant operated because of the emergencies response that we have? Because something will break and there has to be response? We're not bringing in ten to fifteen thousand dollars a month in rent. Because something will break and there has to be response. We're not bringing in ten to fifteen thousand dollars a month in revenue from billing. We are not going in the right direction. And this is why those grants and those outside processes are important to get systems repaired so our operations costs can come down. Uh, we are going to be wrapping up a water rate study. One of the things that already came out as part of this, we got a grant to do the water rate and SDC study. Uh, one of the things that came about was in twenty twenty-three, Adam brought to you guys changing the water rates and you approved the council approved changing the water rates to a tiered system? Well, they didn't get fixed in the finance system, so not everybody was getting billed in that tiered system. So the lost revenue of the last however long can't be made up for. So that's something we'll have to address. Uh, I was in meetings today about our water meters. A lot of the water meters that we have in town are past their useful life and they are not reading the actual usage. They're underreporting the usage. Does that mean that some people's bills may go up? Yes, if you put a new meter in, it's actually recording how much you're using. Um, but we have over the industry standard on how much loss from what we treat at the water plant to what is getting billed is almost fifty percent. Most communities at the most that have aging systems are around thirty percent, so we're higher than that. So I am gonna be seeking out funding as we have applied for a grant to update our water master plan. The meters needs to go into that water master plan is something that needs to be updated, but the goal will be to try to get as much funding in a grant. We will have to take a portion. They have forgivable loans, uh, but not all of it. Uh, but we will need to replace all the meters in town. And at that time, what we're gonna go for is meters that uh will have a radio read. And so the accuracy, the, right now we have manual reads. So there is room for error when someone is physically trying to read what that is. Um, we'll go back out. I have to just give kudos to Fred. He has done an outstanding job of replacing broken meters, of getting those reads done. He, I, I described Fred to someone today as whistle while you work. He has such a positive attitude and approach. I don't know if you guys have noticed this week, he and Nealon had been out on Second Avenue cleaning up the sidewalks. He just saw that it needed it and started doing it. And how exciting is that to have staff that care about their job, take pride in it, and like I said, kinda whistling while you work. He's just a happy guy getting the job done. There's a lot more that needs to be done though, and we're working on that. So uh, the water stuff. Today was the kickoff meeting for the CDBG grant that we got. There is different components that we have to do. Uh, before we can get to the design, the first thing we have to do is there's like a first check off list thing that has to be done and there's a lot of forms that we have to do to do that. Uh, but the very first thing we have to do is assign a grant administrator. Uh, there's thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted in the grant award for a grant administrator. But they will not pay for city staff to do it, so we will have to have a third party do this grant. It's probably a good idea because the amount of work that goes along with the reporting for grants for a CDBG grant is huge and you want someone who has CDBG experience. Uh, today Michelle reached out to RV cog. Their initial response is, yes, we have that experience. And he seemed interested, so we gotta get back to him with that process and connecting with. So our engineer is going to do the portion of the final design, but it also requires, cuz of federal lands, it, it requires an environmental review. And there are not many organizations that know how to do the public works environmental review, so we're looking for a local if possible to do that. Um, I'll give you an example. Uh, we were required to do one for the power house uh Brownsville project and they brought someone from Portland to do it. And a really expensive organization to do it at that. Um, so one of the things that we heard back from RV cog today is that their natural resources uh side does do the environmental reviews. So my hope is we can partner with them for both of those portions. Uh, Michelle and I both will still have a lot of work, working with that grant administrator and whoever does environmental review. But those two pieces have to be done before the design could happen. And it will be at least a year uh, before we kinda get in that phase. Once the design is done, then we'll seek the funding and the next part of CDBG to get the construction done. Just as a reminder, the CDBG grant, we applied for had to be items within our master plan. And so it was limited. We have a lot more projects that need to get done, but they weren't all listed in the water master plan. And it's part of why we've requested a grant to update our water master plan to get the other things in it. Just so you know, when the city did the last water master plan, the recommendation was to replace the water plant. That's really expensive and it's not the recommendation of our current operator, but there's a lot of things that may be repaired at the plant. So we need to do an updated water master plan to get those repairs in there versus just replacing the plant. The cost of this community would be pretty extraordinary to try to replace the whole plant. So the CDBG grant is gonna cover another water main replacement. We're doing the design phase right now, but as you'll remember Senate Bill fifteen thirty, we're doing a water main replacement down between first and second with that money and we're doing some upgrades at the plant. The CDBG grant, we're focusing on the fourth street water main replacement. Uh, replacing hydrants on our system and increasing the amount of fire hydrants we have. Every grant I get, I'm putting the generators for a water treatment plant in our intake, so they were in the Senate Bill fifteen thirty, they're in this one too. Until we get them, I'm gonna keep requesting money for them. Uh, and um, and then a reservoir. So we have two really old reservoirs, one that's not being used, one that needs to be shuttered, but it's the overflow and then the round one. Um, and it's really sad how this town has abused those reservoirs, to hear that people swam and treated water. To hear that they were throwing trash in and when our current operators went up there, they had over a dumpster full of trash they had to pull out of the reservoir. And then they had to put caps on it and they've gated it off so you can't get up there, but it's like, this is our drinking water. It's already treated by the time it's in the reservoir. And so that's an end, but we're looking at the design of where to put another one. One of the concepts, just so it's out there early before a few years down the road when you see changes. One of the concepts is to put a reservoir not on the top of the hill, but directly across from the water treatment plant at the end of Ambrose. That will help us as things happen at our water treatment plant, which is aging our clear well, which is the clear water underneath and the storage of that water. This gives us a backup clear well. And if anything ever happened up on the mountain, we'd have a secondary source that we can run rather to the town around the hill versus over the top. We're looking at wanting to do two reservoirs, one at the top and one below. But this will give the town more diversity and capacity, so if we ever do expand beyond where we are, we're trying to think for the future where we go. So I just want you to be aware, so that's what the CDBG grant uh was encompassing, those four areas, reservoirs, hydrants, generators, fourth line water or water main line res- and we're gonna try to over-design so that as we get more funding, we can do more. And we've requested a grant, we have not heard for, to update the water master plan to get the other items in. Okay, another water update for you. Sorry, I got a lot for you tonight. It's, I, I'm sorry, everybody, but there's a lot going on. Uh, we finally got our approval for the secondary diversion. So they told us we were gonna be approved for a secondary diversion. But then they had to put out public notice that we had to pay and wait for people to object. They didn't. So now we got approval, but what it means is our entire city water right has to be approved before twenty forty. What that means is we have to have the capacity to pull the amount of water that we're approved to pull. And right now, we're not capable of doing that because of the repairs we need to do to our intake. We were repairing some of those part of the EQW grant that got frozen because of the RVSS annexation. I've been told that the transfer of that debt, hopefully between two and three months, USDA will have that done, so we can transfer that debt. That will then unfreeze our grants. We will then be able to go to that space, but we need a third pump at our intake to meet the water requirement. The deadline to get that third pump in there is twenty forty, so I want you all to be aware that we have fifteen years. Otherwise, we lose water rights. So we have to prove that we can draw it so we can keep it. So that is a goal, hopefully, that as we talk about goals, that's something that we have to be able to do and we'll seek that funding. We have some time to do it. But we don't wanna lose capacity cuz we'll never get it back. So it's important we keep the capacity that we've been issued, but we have to prove that we can draw that water right and they've given us fifteen years to do it. Okay, so also on my list before you um, is uh, while I was gone, there was a couple of letters of recommendation that staff sent to the mayor and were sent on our behalf. Normally I would have done, but one of them was sending a letter of request on behalf of RVSS to senators Whiten and Merkley uh for basically a regional sewer uh project funding. And um, so that was, that was sent, uh, let's see. The other one was on behalf of the Jackson County wide natural half, uh, natural hazards mitigation plan update. It's time for us to update the natural hazards mitigation plan and we wanna be a part of that. Uh, I'll give you an example. There's a grant we applied for a couple of months ago. We didn't get because of our status with the current Jackson County project and we wanna make sure that our needs in Gold Hill are verbalized in their natural hazard mitigation plan. And so fire, safety, the generators, the water issues, uh, the things that we can be impacted by. For instance, this last summer, our plant went down every time Pacific Power cut the power. We don't have generators, we couldn't produce water. If something happened at that time, we're in trouble. And the amount of water people were using to water their yards, our reservoir was going down quicker than we could get water back up into it for a bit. Our number one concern with having water in that reservoir is can we put out a fire? It is drinking water and safe drinking water, but fire and community safety is actually our number one concern with those fire hydrants. So anyhow, uh, that was a letter that went out supporting the update and getting a grant to do that update. Um, I did get a call yesterday from Umpqua Bank advising us that we receive interest on our current checking accounts. Uh, and we get two percent on it right now, but those interest rates are going down and it's dropping down to, uh, I think it was one point two five. Uh, so just as a heads up, our earnings at the bank are gonna go down. That is not our local government investment pool. That's that separate investment pool thing at the state. That is still earning interest and we have money in that account. But our Umpqua checking account interest will go from two percent down. And uh, audit status, we do not know when our audits will get done. We have requested them. We've now submitted all the financial summaries to them. We are now waiting for them to say they're gonna come and do that. Uh, we want this done soon and we're gonna try to keep putting pressure on, uh, but Bev today in discussing it was also concerned. It's like, okay, this is kinda getting to the point of what's going on. Last year, they were gonna do it in February. Now we're already into March and we haven't heard yet. And so uh, just want you to know that it is, everything that we need to have submitted for both audit years is now done and confirmed. Uh, what you heard Bev say tonight is she submitted and then learned from staff there was things not done and had to re-edit for that previous year that put us at the back of the line. Uh, but all those things have been corrected and submitted and now we're just waiting for it to be scheduled. Okay, so there's two areas on my report that I put here that are a matter of discussion that I kinda want some feedback with you guys on. One of them is, uh, I'm gonna start with the hard one and then we'll go to the easy one. The hard one to me is boil order notifications. So uh, recently a citizen's water line in their yard broke and uh, it caused, uh, we had to shut down water, reduce the flow and add to a level of percentage wise that uh, we actually had to put people on a boil order that were impacted. So what we try to be intentional to do is give the notice to those impacted by the order. And to not create undue alarm, it doesn't go out to the whole town. And we try to, what has to happen, it's a cautionary procedure that says that the line was open, the potentially could have entered bacteria into the line. We need to make sure to test the line and get it all clear. Uh, and there's standards of how they have to do that. Uh, but in the meantime, they say boil your water, so it'll kill off any bacteria that potentially is there until you get the all clear. Um, I did hear from one citizen who got the boil order who missed the all clear, and so we're trying to figure out what happened with that one. Uh, but the question comes up is should we put something out on Facebook and tell everybody there's a boil order? I personally do not believe we should. I personally believe we should notify the people that are impacted and give the clear to the people that are impacted, so the whole town isn't doing something they don't have to do. Um, if it is something that is gonna impact a greater area, um, sometimes we've heard that, hey, why is my water that color? And it's like, well, run until it clears out. It's just debris and the sediment pulls up from the pipes, you know, that kinda stuff. But in this case, that wasn't the circumstance. There was a very small area that was impacted. Um, but what you'll see is people, I, I got this, did you get that too? And they put it out on Facebook. And then that causes alarm because other people want. So you know, it's kinda one of those things that in, and the other pieces, I wasn't in town. So I didn't necessarily have access to Facebook and everything the way I normally do when you're traveling and you're in airports and all that fun stuff. Like, I didn't have the access to do more. Staff was doing the best they could to get the notices to the individual houses involved and did a great job. They got the samples over. Our staff drove them over to Grants Pass so we can get the results sooner, so we can get the all clear sooner cuz it was going into a weekend. Um, so we did get the all clear. There was nothing in the lines. It was just a precautionary. Uh, but if there's something different that council wants us to do, um, I, I guess I need to know, but for me, it's, it's always the way in the balance of how much alarm do you cause? And, and I was involved with the emergency notifications of evacuations of the twenty twenty wildfires. Because at the time, Josephine and Jackson County were working in partnership. And as Jackson County evacuated and then the fire was threatening the emergency shelter, we got the ref, we got the overflow into Josephine County and over there. Uh, and then I had my own evacuations over there and then all the questions came about, about well, did you use the emergency alert system on the radios? Did you do this? Did you do that? And, and the, you know, we're hearing about different towers going off for different things and people getting notices that didn't. And what we saw in I five is everything was jacked up. Everyone was blocked and if somebody needed to get out, they couldn't. And, and so I guess for me, I weigh in the balance of how much alarm is necessary and how much is, is over. And I, I would just recommend that we have to keep those balances in mind, so I wanted to bring it up because the topic had come up and of course it did reach Facebook. Um, but what I opted to do that day because it was one trailer park impacted is to just notice that area and, and not go further. Um, and hope that things just kinda keep going, you know, that kinda thing. But if council wants us to do something else, what I would say is my ask is that each circumstance, we can address it as needed. If it's a big enough impact, we're gonna put something out. Um, if it's minimal, we're gonna keep it minimal to not freak out, but I wanna make sure I'm following council's direction and what you would like me to do in that process.
So, uh, you know, my only um, ask I guess is if you could at least send out an email to Mayor and City Council that this situation is going on and this is affecting, because what happens is people start seeing it on Facebook and then they start calling. And then I go, I don't know. I don't know anything about it. So yeah, I understand, you know, not wanting to cause panic, but then it, it it's, it doesn't feel good to not know what's going on and people are calling.
I think that's a total reasonable request. Um, and we will make sure that staff does that too. This was a circumstance that wasn't usual cuz I'm usually here. And, and it was, I mean, it just happened to be the day that I was in airports, so I didn't have as easy access as I did the rest of the time I was gone.
Yeah, that could just be a standard procedure that
I'll second that.
I'm going soon again. Don't worry.
Alright, so now we're on ten.
Okay, well, wait, wait, wait. One more. We do, I'm so excited. This, this is exciting, so, uh, you'll notice that I sent you out an email. You know, um. I, I s- I was on city council almost six years in Grants Pass. And I saw it done every year, a little different. Um, but we kind of got into these three day retreats. Where we would go over goals and council would vote on things and, and some of the citizen advisory committees would come in and give reports on things that there were goals for them. And, um, public would watch and stuff and it's really cool, but they have a lot of staff to support that. And, um, so, you know, this is my first time being a city manager. Uh, now I had similar experiences as a county commissioner because we didn't have an administrator. So you found yourself doing some stuff like that, but. But as a newbie, I want to do the right thing by you guys. So last year, um, I had a friend who normally charges a lot of money. That came and, and gave his time. Uh, to kind of, we called it a strategic planning, I think that day. And a whole bunch of community members were involved. We did a SWOT analysis, which SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and growth. Or, uh, I call it threats. He called it growth because there wouldn't be swag if it was growth, it's SWOT threats. So some, some values that came out of it were sustainable growth, integrity, safety, being collaborative. That our city wants a positive identity. But the themes that came out of the SWOT analysis, kind of in ranked order. Uh, and I emailed this out to you. The number one most important theme that came out of all of it was our infrastructure. I think if anybody spent a second in this community, we know our streets. Are failing. Our water is failing. Our storm water has failed. Uh, ask Swede how many times they flooded this Christmas. Uh, and then our parks, in the summertime, you can see the infrastructure that's failed with our sprinkler system and some of that other stuff. Uh, so our infrastructure came out as number one. It's, it's great to identify that, but then how do we pay for it? So the number two that came out on the votes last year was financing and funding. We want our finances to be accurate. And we want the funding to do things so that we can afford it in this community. And then the third was actually a tie between two topics and that's public safety and recreation. I have talked to the sheriff about some things, but there's some big decisions the council has to make coming up on how do we fund it? And how do we get there? And what level of services do we have? Uh, for all the things, public safety related. And that includes talking about what happens when the bridge closes and how does that impact us? And at the end of this year, when state police move out because their station's going to be done. And we have that space available, what's next? So there's some things about public safety that we're going to need to identify. Recreation, what does that mean? Our, our parks, when I met with each of you when I first started and I asked, what do you think our greatest asset was? You all said our river and our parks and our people. And, and so that aspect of wanting to recreate in this community, I am so proud of our parks advisory committee. We have awesome members that are really active and working as a cohesive unit to say, what do we do? Uh, but then it always goes back to funding and how do we get there? Uh, we, oh my goodness, we had this little playground piece that we were really excited. We thought we'd apply for a grant because it's ten thousand dollars, no problem, hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Hundred fifteen thousand dollars for one piece. It's really cool and you'll really like it, but we have to find the right grant someday to do that one. So, uh, since public safety and recreation were tied, I took us to a fifth unit and, and, and that is governance. That's our code, that's our enforcement of the code, that's our policies that we're doing. And holy mackerel, as a council, what you guys have accomplished in the last year is incredible. This year alone with twenty resolutions so far is a lot of work. You guys are getting the work done. That is admirable, the cohesiveness, and it doesn't mean we're always in agreement. But we're having that dialogue and we're having that discourse to get things done is pretty cool. And there's a lot more that needs to happen there. So I reached out to a different facilitator. Uh, that's going to lead us through the conversation on Saturday. Uh, instead of calling it goal setting or strategic planning, I just called it council retreat. It's going to be short, it's going to be here, we're going to go from nine to one. And instead of it being a big community wide thing, it's going to be the council. Uh, but what we'll do is we'll take what I sent to the facilitator, the outcome of last year. It said, now take us to the next level. And, and the first place would be, we need to identify. Some bullet points under each of these themes to kind of focus on. And so our task right now. I scheduled this into our meeting that we can get this part done. Then I'm going to meet with the facilitator tomorrow, we're going to go over those bullet points. Now I can tell you what I want those bullet points to be, but that doesn't matter because it's a council driven goals. I as staff respond to council driven goals. And, and so I sent them out to you guys via email. And I said, we need to pick a couple items in each of these areas. Um, and that would kind of give us, I. Joe, Joe's told me several times, Lily, pick one thing, just get one thing done, don't try to take it all on. The problem is there's so much that needs to be done, you gotta take on a lot. But I think this is where men and women come alongside each other and help balance each other out. Cause I want to take it all on and I need that reminder, one step at a time. This is where we pick those couple of things to be our top priorities going into this next couple of years to focus on. And so I tried to give you guys a heads up. That we needed to pick a couple of bullet points under these five areas. And I say five because they're the top four, but two were tied, so that went to five. And so hopefully gave you guys enough time to think of. If you had to say your top priority or two under infrastructure. And I gave you a lot to kind of think on ahead of time with all those things we're talking about. What would those be for the council? And, um. Anyhow, uh, so this is kind of a time, if, if any of you guys thought of some things that you would like to be a top goal under those areas. And then we as a whole can kind of decide, I'll take that back to the facilitator. And then that'll lead our conversation on Saturday. So this is kind of workshop time, uh, but anyhow, any thoughts?
I have a very important question for the council retreat. What do we have for lunch?
Well, it depends on your priorities under number two finance.
There we go.
Um.
I'm just kidding. So the five bullet, I think you said five.
I did, because two of them were tied.
Can we add to those?
No.
No? Okay.
What?
I did.
Well, can our goals fit under those five?
Right. Well. I took the five and then I did like sub.
And, and that's exactly what we're asking for right now, what are the subcategories?
Not, not which one is most important.
No, no. This is subcategories under these areas and this is kind of based on what was the outcome of last year of the priorities. Kind of building on that moving forward. Now, we're going to, the, the other things that came out, just so you know, that left off the list, there was only a couple others. There was, there was, uh, eight total with three having a tie. So the ones left off right now were economic development, tourism, quality of life and direction. But I think you're going to see those areas will be impacted by these other things anyhow. Um, and. I personally question recreation being on the list. Because I think the things that are impacting that are some of the infrastructure and some of the funding stuff, but that's just me personally. I, I didn't change the information that came to us. This is, this is exactly how it was voted on by the group. Um, and. But we can do some subcategories on what that looks like. And, um, I will tell you, we're still trying to track down a lot, but there's going to be a point that we don't bring in as much money as we did last year. And we have to kind of prioritize with what we have, where do we focus it? Um, and so, yeah, some of the subcategories. I mean, to me, I don't know how to break down the infrastructure subcategories when I know I have four areas I have to do infrastructure on. Parks, streets, storm water and water, you know, and, and all of them have need. And I'm going to have to devote time to those. But I wanted to hear what council thought the subcategory should be.
I'll email him.
Okay, I won't reiterate the email I sent, say, come prepared to discuss. Just teasing, all right, Sherry, I know you said you'd bring someone, any of the topics, did you have anything? Okay. Well, I'm going to let you know, I have a meeting tomorrow at five o'clock to go over these with the consultant. So if there is subcategories. That you have concern with, all right, let's talk, we can do it right now, we can come up with them together, we don't need you to email.
Under infrastructure.
You, you missed, go back straight on, there you go.
Under infrastructure, shouldn't it be, um, or my thoughts were, isn't that just our roads and our water right now? Or should say. Storm raining.
And parks. Well, I'll let you know that, um. I'm going to be trying, my goal with, I mean, and we can continue on this talk on Saturday. So for roads, we have a grant to do a transportation plan. In that transportation plan, they're going to identify. All of our transportation needs and goals. And then based on that plan, we can try to apply for more funding. So right now, I'm also applying for a small city allotment grant, what I opted to go for this year. After going back and forth about the greatest need in the community, I picked Fourth Avenue between Dardanelle and Gustav. And if I can keep going west, I will, but, but you have sidewalks partially on side. But fourth is still utilized a lot, it's the dump from everything uptown comes down on the fourth. And you come off a two thirty four at Dardanelle and you go to Gustav, the two crossings of the railroad. That section in between there, I think needs redone. And so, I mean, but all of our streets need redone. So we're going to have to identify that, but let's get the plan done first. The small city allotment, hoping to get the funding to do that and keep going if we can. I can try to hit Chauvin or two maybe, I, I'm trying to debate on where those are, but my hesitancy to do Chauvin was. Uh, that we're about to replace a water line all the way through there and I don't want to pave a street and then cut a hole in it to replace a water line. I want to get the water line and then pave a road. Um, so I'm going to be doing some maintenance things, we just filled some potholes on Jacoby. I really want to pave Jacoby, but guess what? We have two housing projects that are going to be coming up on Jacoby, multifamily units and that construction would tear up that road. I want to be smart about it. Uh, so anyhow, um. I, I'm not sure the right answer under infrastructure because it really does come down to trying to get the funding and making a plan. Um, and, uh, if the council's okay with it, I am going to be seeking how to fix the storm drain. That goes under Second Avenue from Swedes. It's the collector of everything that comes from uphill. It flooded their conference room in their building twice this winter. And if you notice, the library parking lot was flooded. That tells me that the storm drains are not moving out to the river the way they need to. And I need to track that down and see why. Swedes has been begging for years. They said I was the sixth city manager they've talked about the project with and they didn't talk to the interims. It's a lot and it's causing them issues. And it's our responsibility, so what I've done so far is I paid RVSS to tele- television the line. And the line's three quarters full of dirt and debris. I can't just clean it out, it might collapse the street. So I had to get a hold of ODOT, I mean, there's some stuff there, right? But we have an obligation to get the storm water out. And so I'd like to focus on that piece and then a storm water plan to continue the other stuff. Um, but if I had to sum up each of them, infrastructure would be. To make sure there's a plan on how to do it, that everything's mapped and there's a plan and we keep seeking the plan. And funding to get the plan done, I mean, to me, that's kind of. Make a plan and get funding to do the plan. If I, if, if it were me, but I, I'm not really sure, because. I didn't pick the themes, I just know that's where the needs are, so, but, but do you guys have other thoughts on that? What do you think?
So the storm water, um, you know, what, what is our plan at this point to repair that? How are we going to repair that?
I don't have a plan.
That's what, that's what Saturday's for.
I mean, you're, you're talking about a, a collapsed, um, line, so what, what is jack and bore? A possibility that it can done quicker and more efficiently?
I need.
Trenching and putting in the line.
I need to bring somebody out to do an assessment to help us determine what the best course is. Because initially before the rains of this winter. My thought was, all right, so a few years ago, the city engineer came up with a plan to put. A motorized pump on Fourth Avenue and pump it down to Dardanelle. I don't want a mechanized plan, uh, uh, pump that I have to maintain. Uh, storm water is supposed to go by gravity. And so my thought was, since Star, uh, since Swede owns the parking lot where the library is. Uh, they never gave up ownership of that so they could run their trucks through there, right? The, the backup happens kind of in their back lot and then it goes under their building. And then it backs up right to the street, you'll see it when it's really high water table boiling, bubbling out of the, the. The drain manhole cover. And, uh, so. RVSS wasn't able to go all the way to see how bad it is across the street. So they went to the river and tried to come back and that line looks collapsed. We found a parallel line that's in good shape. They couldn't get it at the, the Second Avenue end, but they went from the river and they were able to come all the way back. As a matter of fact, they even found a manhole cover we didn't have identified. So we got that marked about where it is, we'll have to dig it out and get a, we can't find it. It's, it's covered in dirt and debris at some point, that's always fun. Uh, but I can't just bore that out because what happens, there's a hole in that pipe right now. It's, it's like a vacuum, it's pulling in dirt, which means if I just go and pull out that dirt from one end. It will keep pulling out and it'll collapse the road and that's how you get a sinkhole sometimes, you know, when it, water runs it out. So I have to actually get some more help in this. So today, ODOT emailed me the best drawings they have from two thousand and four. Um, we might have to do some bore hauling or, uh. Whatever you call it, just potholing to, to see where the things are at. But we're going to make a plan and I'm committed to get it fixed. And, and so, um, and I'm going to have to try to figure out how to pay for that. I will tell you that right now. Our water bills, everybody pays three dollars a month towards storm water. Part of that is going towards the street cleaning. Part of that pays for, I don't even know what other part, I mean, right now that's the only permanent thing. But that's what this money should go towards is fixing storm line cleaning. Our guys go and clean out the other ones and culverts and stuff and they, there's one on fourth that's had a steel plate over it forever. That, we need to fix that, it, we can't just leave a steel plate over it and we didn't even know it. There's another one that's down by Rays where there's a buckled sidewalk and there's a manhole in the middle of it, guess what? It's our storm drain, we got to reset that. So there's a little things there, but I, I think that's why instead of bringing every little mini project to y'all. To me, I think the goal with infrastructure would be to make sure we create a plan. And to fund that plan and to keep going one at a time. Um, I will keep bringing project lists back on what we're working on. And I'll try to be doing that monthly to you guys to tell you, I, I got bids for sidewalk repair, we're going to do sidewalk repair soon. Um, and that was stuff that's supposed to be done a couple of years ago, I was told, but we're going to get it done in the next month. Um, but I can, I can on my manager's report, bring you those individual projects. I think goals for the council needs to be bigger picture instead of the individual projects. Um, I don't think we have a choice but to keep working on water. Um, but.
It seems like we don't have a choice but to work on streets and water and storm. And we are, I mean, it sounds like, so.
So that's why my thought was a plan. Have a plan of what you work on, put it in the master plan, keep the, keep the master plans updated. And according to those master plans and those plans, get funding to get the projects done.
So we've already worked, we're already working on a streets plan, the transportation plan.
Yep.
You're working on a grant for, to update the water plan.
It's already submitted.
Mm-hmm, and did you say? Mm-hmm, and did you say we have a grant? Application to work on stormwater or no?
I haven't found anyone that's willing to fund a stormwater plan yet. Um, so we might just have to do it in-house. What I did do is reach out to RV cog. And um, I'm trying to determine if we can get linked with their GIS system. Or do we continue to use what the city's been using our own version called Diamond Maps? Will Diamond Maps translate into GIS or not? So we're in discussions with RV cog, uh, if. If we can get those linked, because there's some level of mapping that we have in Diamond already with our stormwater system. A few years ago, a city employee labeled. Um. Where everything was to the best, it's not everything, but it's a start, so I don't want to throw out what we have already. We're trying to kind of piecemeal that. Uh, but. I will look for grants for it, but we haven't found one yet. And until we get the USDA thing resolved and our. Status with the loan defaults cleared. We're not eligible for federal grants. So that's the next place I would look, because I don't think the state will do it at this time. I'm I've been told. The water wastewater grant and the other ones don't do stormwater.
And then we need to upgrade the parks. So that's four bullet points under those. Under infrastructure.
So the the stormwater, is that something that a bond issue for the city could help pay for?
Boy, we've asked for so much money from people recently. I would really hate to try to do that, but.
I I mean, it like it needs to be addressed, cuz I, I mean, I I've seen that 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 boiling up down there. And again, that that can turn into a health hazard. So I mean, it needs to be addressed and and there are many ways of. Like I said, I think honestly, the cheapest and the best way would be a jack and bore system, put in a new line, identify where the old ones are, so we miss them. Put in a new line, abandon those old lines, just get it done.
So.
It's it's not getting them done, it's giving them money to get them done.
Yeah.
Right now, our grants are furs.
Do, then we know how much it's gonna cost, and then we can.
And that's why I suggest we focus on getting plans and then figuring out one, if we have plans in place, then we can figure out how to get the.
Yeah, you can't get the funding unless you have a plan.
That's exactly right.
So for me, I I'll keep reporting back on the infrastructure needs. We know all of the areas need it. Uh, we're trying with our local staff to get as much of the storm drains, but I mean, drive down six, there's supposed to be a ditch all the way down six. There's not. You know, there's, there's a lot of work to be done. So if we identify where things are, make a plan, and then try to chip away at them. To me, that's a good goal to focus on. Um, and I would say the other thing is, is if we don't have the funding, then then maintenance level. Not improvements, but we'll have to go there, but um. But funding and finance is the next piece. So I guess what what would your goals be for what we do with finance and funding?
Audit's up to date, obviously. And um, regular city council, um, financial reports, at least quarterly.
They're not small. Just go quarterly per now.
I think that's reasonable. I think that's a good one. Um, and in the topic of bonds and stuff like that, we can talk further on Saturday. Um. Yeah, right now, just kind of looking at a couple of subcategories as goals to lead into the conversation on Saturday.
Something I might add to that, the finance is, um. We found our spot, ourselves in a really hard spot for over the last couple of years. Do we have a a backup plan so it doesn't happen again?
What's that?
Contingencies.
Financial contingencies or or what?
Trying to figure out way, what a a plan, so we don't have this happen again.
Okay, so I will tell you that one of the things that, um. I once asked Adam. About some of the choices he made in leadership and direction and all that other kind of stuff, and he said. Um. I I cuz one of the things that staff had a hard time with me when I came in is I delved into getting a bunch of stuff done and and. You know, questions come in, it's like, staff, handle it. Bring me in when you need, but handle it. What was going on before that is everything was sent to Adam and he handled it all. And so there was a level of, okay, who does what? And and I'm like. Matter of fact, the statement they told the mayor is she's still doing her legislative job cuz she's out in the community and doing all these meetings. Well, I was doing the RV cog meeting, I was doing the the manager's meeting, I was, you know, trying to figure out funding. It was for this job that I was doing. But networking is a huge part of what a manager does. Um, and it's just what I learned is. None of our staff had ever worked for government before. So the concept of how government funding is and budget and. Our budget is our approved allocation, and if it's not budgeted, you don't spend it. That concept was foreign. The other thing is, is there's been so much staff turnover. Fred told me the other day that once upon a time, Tony told him that they'd gone through twenty-five employees in five years. I had thought I was the fourth city manager in fifteen months. I wasn't. I was the fifth. I forgot that there was a guy that came for one day and left. And I don't even know if he ever started, but he was recruited and he showed up and said, no, thanks. And that was after Adam and before Bill. That there was a guy chosen in the selection process, and Bill told me he showed up and left. And I didn't even remember that. It was why Bill made every applicant when I applied come and do a tour. Because they had somebody show up and say, no, thanks, and so didn't start the job. Um, so I guess it doesn't technically count, but there's been so much turnover that there's not institutional knowledge. We depend so much on our volunteers to tell us what's been and what's happened, and we've been digging through the files and trying to find things to put the story together. So one of the things that um, we're trying to implement is putting a policy and procedure manual together. So that my goal is that we build things to a level. And this is part of the governance. Is that we have a procedure in place for how do you do payroll? How do you do utility billing? How do you do this? How do you do that? Uh, that. When plans come in for a building project, this is the steps in the checklist. Here's the cost. And we're gonna be bringing you all the stuff. We have some other permits that we don't even have, fewer permits we issue right now. That's costing the city money to cover for people getting business done, but we're getting charged by our partners to do it. I'm gonna have to bring stuff back to you, and it it'll come in the April meeting. Aren't you excited? Um, but if we don't have, um. Those procedures and process in place, I'll give you an example. Our code doesn't currently allow us to lean a property. So generally speaking, what cities do when someone doesn't pay their water bill, it stays with the property. If somebody moves out or not, the property gets leaned, and it gets dealt with if it's sold or, you know, whatever happens. It's not in our code. So do we need to update the code to allow liens? And then do you force in that code, everybody to sign a new contract that they'll agree to it? What happens with the outstanding balances at that time? What happens to those that were incurred when it didn't? So these are some policy decisions that need, we'll be bringing back to the council this year of updating policies and stuff, but part of it is. Is as people come in, how do they know what to take over work? Can they grab a book and say, this is the procedure for this thing, and we're gonna follow it? And hopefully, my goal, so in fifteen months, I know I was, at least there was Jerry and Adam and Bill and me. I've now hit my fifteenth month. I've already doubled. That, right? Let's get some longevity with our staff. Let's try to build some stuff that we can build some systems in place. I will tell you, I'm trying to recruit somebody. That will help us in some areas I don't have knowledge in. And and I have to try to figure out, how do I pay for that person's expertise? And how do we kind of do it? And and so, and this will. We'll we'll come up with some plans. I don't have it all there, but this is part of it is. And that expertise means we're coming up with the policies and procedures that this the city is stable. And that whoever comes in. Someday I'm gonna leave in thirty years, and when I do, who can take over, can fill in, just keep that going. That continuity of operations is essentially the plan that we need to come up with. The policies and procedures and the continuity of operations is how I would say we avoid what has happened before. I talk too much. I apologize.
No, it's, we learn from all that. I'll speak for myself, I do. Um, can I bring us back to the list of five and some bullet points?
Yes, ma'am.
So something, um. Of course, an issue that's uh, close to my heart. Uh, with public safety and recreation is the powerhouse. Um. Sure would like to see that. Place turned into usable public space. And I know that, you know, we we're we're working with federal agencies on that, and we that's a river we really can't push, but I would like that to be. Acknowledged that we need work on that.
I will tell you I have a meeting tomorrow, separate from the goal setting and the things. I have a meeting tomorrow about the analysis, the Brownsville, the the results. Brownsville's, yeah, I always get that messed up. So. The last I heard, that, I mean, if they had their way, the goal would be to eliminate the building entirely to take it down.
Yeah, but that's probably too expensive.
I I I, well, they, then we have to figure out the funding. Here's the thing is. The safety component of what's there right now and the way the roof is coming in and. The gaping holes and the thirty, forty feet drops and the machinery that needs to come out of there. This, the safest is to, I my, I would love a McMenamins. I'd love a a tourist thing, a. It, but the reality is, is their recommendation, I believe, from DEQ will be to. Remove the building structure entirely, and then they have to try to help us come up with funding to do it. But I'm jumping ahead. That's just based on the conversation that I'd last heard.
I think it could be safely turned into public space without. I think it could be adapted. Um, and that's just from me talking to those people when when we were more involved in it.
Um, well, the testing, this all come back. Maybe you can come in in the meeting tomorrow.
Oh, I'd love to. Um, it costs more to take it down than to adapt it because of the DEQ requirements. And and dealing with nasty stuff in there. Asbestos and lead makes it really expensive to take it down, but if it's covered up. And re-landscaped, I think that's, that's what I got out of the the receivable that we got from.
What? The point is, cuz I worked with DEQ on that several. Little times, but. Leaving it there is gonna cost a lot of money too. Because it's it's an environmental hazard. That's how they're looking at it. It doesn't matter if we take it down or leave it. It's an environmental hazard, and so we have these issues, and that's what's gonna be addressed.
So just for the sake of us not having the whole conversation today to leave some for Saturday, um. I think the building is a safety concern. And the recreation opportunity, if we can figure it out, I will tell you every conversation I have a DEQ brings back to what can we preserve? What can we turn it into? That isn't the, that isn't the direction that their conclusions are going, just so you can be aware. I don't want you to be surprised that their report will say to remove the building. Um, they don't believe, they do not believe at this time it can be preserved safely. But I keep asking that question. And, um. I I will tell you, I was out there with the fire department and some other agencies, and we were looking at the grant for the fuels reduction, and. It's, it's bad. So public safety.
Just wanna see that project mentioned somewhere, is all.
Absolutely. Um, powerhouse, okay. Um. So some components of public safety I'd like you to keep in mind. Uh, in the past, we've had our own police department. We've also contracted with the sheriff's office for specific targeted patrols specifically. The sheriff said that he was here one night at city council to sign. Uh, to present to the council about having a second contracted position, and that night they fired the city manager. And, uh. He is open to contracting again. And would be willing to work with us on what that would be and what that would mean and what the cost would be, but quite frankly. I don't see how we pay for it, and it would require a funding mechanism, and that's a big decision for the council. So. The other pieces, of course, the other pieces of safety, emergency operations, uh, you know. Making sure our emergency operations plan is updated, evacuation routes, fire safety, um. And code enforcement is a part of that too, and the safety component of that. So I'm trying to figure out a piece of some of that, but. Uh, often I have people call and say, what are you doing about? And we are at the mercy of. When the sheriff's office can respond. Now, I'm really impressed with some of the responses we've had. And we have some deputies that live in our community or nearby, and they really take pride in our area, and they're knowing our area. But we are at the mercy of sometimes it's gonna be a couple hours before something happens. So what would our goal be for? What does public safety mean to the council? And what would a goal be in that area based on the goals that came out of? This was an area that was the third highest priority in our SWAT last year. Was public safety. So what what could some subcategories be? So what I heard is our facilities and and recreation was tied, right? So our facility is safe. That we can utilize them for recreation is kind of in there too, but what else would we look at for public safety? It hasn't gone anywhere yet. I brought it up the other day again. Um, there was some word from some higher ups that made a. Comment in passing that they've enjoyed having the state police here as a location and the sheriff's office about a substation, but, um. I brought it up so they can put it on their awareness, so we see if we go there, but. Um, I'm not sure if the sheriff is interested. The state police is who actually mentioned that, I thought before. So anyhow, um, use of the other half of this building is a revenue opportunity. Uh, if it could be a public safety organization. The other thing is, could it be a staging place during the bridge replacement for some other emergency services or something? Uh, so there's some opportunities there, but, um. Other things of public safety. Do I, do you guys know, how did we pay for a police department back in the day? How did they pay for contracted sheriff?
No paperwork on any of that.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And they were really. And supposedly, we're supposed to patrol forty hours. I'm sorry. And then, then they kind of said, well, we count when, you know, if we're going on I five, we take a detour and drive through Gold Hill, we count that as. But no, that's not. And then when they did show up, they were abusive. A raiding people for calling. You know, it's.
Well, that's a different issue. That would be an accountability with the sheriff. And we can have those conversations, but I I Sheriff Sicker hasn't been sheriff. Well, no, he was sheriff. Gosh, that time has passed, but either way. If if we want something different, this, the county administrator's view is that we shouldn't have anything beyond. Uh.
I mean, what, what we have is no different from what people who live on Lampman. Or people who live on Sardine Creek.
Mm-hmm.
You know, or people who live on Blackwell. Or people who live further out on two thirty-four, we have the same law enforcement coverage that they do. Why do we think in town here, in which is one square mile? Town is one square mile. Why do we need special coverage for one square mile? I just.
My response to that would be because we actually are a hub of their surrounding area. And think of how many people actually live outside the city limits that call Gold Hill home. That take responsibility for the community. I mean, few in this room don't live in the city limits that do, but. Just like in a daytime, you have people that come to the community that then leave. Uh, we have schools in this community. If something were to happen at a school, what's the safety there? You have more concentration in a city limits. We have services that are in the city limits that in the neighboring communities, they don't. You don't see a grocery store in Lampman, but we have the grocery stores. We have. Crime that occurs with the businesses that are in the city hub. Uh, and so generally speaking, you're gonna have more activity here. Um, as people come to the destination. We have parks that are destination. That also means that there's sometimes activities that happen there, so. What I would say is that there is, um. Yeah, our stolen banner, uh, we needed the, you know. Yeah, yeah, but but things happen when there's more density of population than in the rest of the rural area is. Is what I would say to that answer. Now, at what level? Does that mean? Um, there's code enforcement that we can do part of our. Um, there's code enforcement that we can do part of ourselves. There are CSOs that respond to other things. Uh, you know, we had somebody taking down the guard rail at the end of a road so they could take a shortcut, but creates a safety hazard. You know, that's how how do we respond to that? Who's the enforcement of that? So for council. What could be a subcategory of under public safety? With this being your third highest, I mean, first was infrastructure, then it was finance and funding. Third was public safety tied with recreation. What would a subcategory of? Public safety be that you think would be worth discussing?
And the and the thing that came to mind when I was looking at it was. I was more focused on public safety aspect of what we're gonna do while the bridges. I mean, we're gonna tackle all these other issues. No matter what. But we have a big event coming up. That we need to sit there and look at because everybody in this entire town is affected by. Business owners, people that are living here, everybody's gonna be affected by that bridge being shut down.
Yeah.
You no longer have hospital, ambulance, fire, police. All those things are gonna get rerouted and you lose it. The only reason I'm thinking that heavily on it is because after my little issue. I'm thinking of some other people that are around here that might have issues too and that and that response time is life and death. And I think that would be a great bullet point for us to look at because it's something that's coming up that's just gonna be for a limited time.
And and this is subcategories for the next year or two, right? So that's appropriate. Okay. Um. Recreation or is that enough from public safety? Okay. I hear you. We need to be done. We're going late. Uh. Hey, you know, we've been here all day. This is fun. Okay, so for recreation, um. I'm gonna tell you, I am. We're gonna keep working with our parks advisory committee and running things through them. Um, we're gonna keep seeking funding to repair and bring to up to speed things. And trying to identify those things that still need to be done. Um, maybe a bullet point would be to. Improve the safety of the facilities.
Repair and maintain.
Repair and maintain, yeah.
About installing.
Installing. I would, I would love to. Gosh, there's some vault toilets over by the tennis courts that are just kind of still shut.
Why are they just sitting there?
I don't.
They should be removed or used.
I think we should open those up in the summertime and and have extra. I will have them inspected and find out. You know, things I never thought I'd have to learn. Vault toilets are not maintained the same as motorhomes. So when they cleaned everything out, the city's obligated to put something in. So you add lime and you add water so that it's used and you can survive the experience.
Yeah, restrooms, some restrooms down at uh, Potomac.
Tillamook Falls?
The only restrooms in the sports park. Well, there's one at the boat ramp.
So as far as I'm aware, the restroom facility we have that are nice. Were per uh, obtained with a state grant. The restrooms?
Yes.
Okay. No, the ones by the parking lot, okay.
Made ones with the washing toilets.
Weird. Okay. Well, the documentation sure is funny. I'll tell you that. It just said a grant got him, so it was your grant. Okay. Um, and you know, the 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 question was made about Lampman. There's not restrooms over there. Now, I personally.
It wouldn't.
Well, yeah, that's another conversation we talk about. So so do we have enough facilities for the recreation that's needed? And all that kind of stuff. So facility repair and mandate, that's great for recreation. So then let's move on to governance unless there's anything else.
We already mentioned policy and procedure manuals. Um, we we did the charter.
So we have a Gold Hill municipal code that is kind of like our Bible. Uh, no, that's not the right comparison, but it is what we're supposed to go reference when everything's going on and it's our governing document. It was last updated in two thousand and four. Every ordinance passed in the last twenty-one years is not in the code. When we got a grant through DLCD in twenty twenty-three to update Title seventeen, which is our planning code. They didn't know to include some of the ordinances the council had passed along the way and didn't add it back in. Things that are really important. So we already need to update Title seventeen to include some of these other things that were in there and all, but. But I can tell you, the entire code needs to be refreshed and done. And that's our guiding document. It has not been updated since two thousand and four. There's a lot of laws that have changed and updated. There's things in there that don't make sense. Um. So. I think policies and procedures, but also our code is kind of that next, one of those things you might consider. Anything else or any other thoughts? Okay, well, so just as a a reminder, we're gonna be here Saturday at nine. Um, I will have some snacks for you. Uh, if you want anything other than coffee. Uh, you need to let me know. Um, I wanna remind you, as part of the good of the order, mayor, if I could jump ahead. Thursday, we're hosting the League of Oregon Cities Small Cities Regional Meeting. In this room, I have a caterer, a local business that is gonna be catering for us, Willie's Burgers. They're not making burgers. Uh, he's actually catering for us. Uh, but uh, so we'll be in here from eleven to one on Thursday. You have all RSVP'd except Rick, you can't come. Uh, you didn't RSVP. There's not enough food for you. Just kidding. If 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 your plans change, just let me know. Um, but I just wanna remind you, we'll be here. So we're hosting on Thursday. It's not a meeting open to the public, just FYI. This is a League of Oregon Cities meeting, but. Um, it's kind of, we do it quarterly around Southern Oregon. All the way up to just north of Roseburg, I think, or south of Rose, I can't remember, north of Roseburg. Yeah, one of those towns that I'd never been to. Um.
But add that this is the first time that we'll see.
Have you guys never hosted before?
No.
Well, good job. Isn't this a, all right. I am proud of it and I wanna point out that we also completed our four-way foundation grant from last year. We did add the signage. One thing that is important for you to realize is our staff had closed on Fridays. We are still closed to the public on Fridays. We are working to get some things done. I added to the door Friday by appointment. So if there is something that someone could only do on a Friday, they can make an appointment and we will try to accommodate. Uh, so just trying to make sure that responsive to the public needs. Uh, but the signage on the door and you will notice the door also says no public restrooms. Uh, and so that is now documented and so, um, but I am proud that we'll be hosting on Thursday. I think the place looks great. Um, the volunteers that helped us paint and uh, the work was done. Um, the four-way foundation said that one thing that impacted them giving us the grant is when they came and they saw that we were willing to do the demolition ourselves. And using volunteers that helped us get the grant. And that's pretty cool. So uh, anyhow.
It really looks nice. The entrance looks.
It's kind of neat and it's ADA. So. Okay, um, that's all I have for you and thank you all for your time.
Anything good of the order here?
Oh, I forgot to ask.
Yes, we are next.
Well, council, um. I don't have anything glaring for next week. If you wanna break until the first of April, we can do that. If something comes up, if we wanna schedule it for the last week in April or in March, we could, but I think that's spring break. No, I don't have kids, so I have no idea. Um, sorry.
I don't either.
Um, but. I I don't, well, we had a couple of things on the agenda, but it wasn't a lot that maybe couldn't wait. So if if you don't want, we could be done for the month.
I think since we have the retreat and we have the LLC.
I.
I agree with that.
You are volunteers and I have you three times this week. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we will not do another meeting unless an emergency comes up and the mayor will make that decision to call a council meeting. Uh, so our next meeting will be Tuesday, April first, no full in.
I do have something for the good of the order. When Lily was gone, I came into the city hall twice. And was impressed with her staff. And they were going through some pretty stressful things, but they handled it and they got it done. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
I have one more thing. I will let you know, we got a permit request. Uh, Little League is moving forward with getting the uh, shed rebuilt. And and um, also expanding the dugout. So we're processing those uh, planning review and we'll be sending it on. Um, and uh, initiated with them a lease renewal. So I forgot to let you guys know that piece. Uh, in case that permit gets issued sooner, you start seeing activity down on the park. Should let you know.